Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, October 6, 2008. It's on or about 7:30 PM. City Council is meeting in regular session tonight. We do have a quorum with all members present. Next item on our agenda is disposition of meeting minutes from the regular session held September 15 through 8 and the special session held September 22 through 8. Motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have accepted the meeting minutes from those meetings. Under communication, member Nysley, I believe you have something you wish to share?
Yes.
Okay.
I did want to let the audience here know and also the public that on October 28, and I believe that's the day of a football game, the city of Athens is going to begin to enforce a no parking regulation on Route 682. And the primary reason for that is that that is a road that is a state highway and there are lots of people that are coming off that highway at a high rate of speed. There's no space on the shoulder of the road for people to park and then walk along, so pedestrians are really at risk. So we're just wanting to begin to get the word out there now that beginning October 28, that will be begin to be enforced.
Thank you. Also under communications, we received a request, City Council did, I believe last Thursday, from Dr. McDavid's office, asking for council to meet with them for lunch. This is something that we've done several times before. And after emails gone back and forth between those council members, it appears that December 16, Tuesday, December 16, will be the time that works the best for everyone. So unless we have some grand objection, I'll have the clerk get back in touch with Mr. Dr. McDavid's office. He will move forward on that date. And of course, that would be open to any member of the community or press that would like to attend. Are there any other communications anyone wishes to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile.
Let's see, just a few things to reiterate. I think I mentioned before, October 8 is, I guess that'd be this Wednesday, at the community center. I believe it's 7 o'clock, 6 PM, sorry. There'll be a forum for the electric, information forum from the Office of the Ohio Consumer Council. This has to do with the change of rates as well as what the American Electric Power is planning to do to improve their grid. And it's at the community center on East State Street. And as I said, I think I brought this up before, but just to let you guys know, we're starting to work on Granville Mary Street for the water and the paving. And we just opened a bid for the well cleaning, just so you guys are aware. And that's really all I have.
City auditor Kathy Heck.
No report.
Law director Patrick Plaine.
Nothing for now.
Although we do have an executive session later on that won't be discussing things. Ordinances for third reading, oh, 9808, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 21 subdivision regulations. Member Gosny.
Yes, Mr. President. This is an ordinance that will simply update a technical reference in our city code.
Let's move to adopt.
And I move that we adopt ordinance 09808. So this is, as I mentioned a second ago, just an update to our technical reference for rainwater management in land development in the city of Athens in our city code. We're replacing an 87 reference with the most current version of that same manual.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 9808?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 9908, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 27 land development. Again, member Gosny.
Thank you. This is the exact same reference change that we adopted a moment ago in 09808, except this is in relation to Title 27. I move for adoption.
Second.
Again, this is simply updating a technical reference in our city code.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. On to ordinances for first reading, ordinance 10208, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an interfund transfer. Member Sands.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move that we consider ordinance 10208 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This ordinance, if you've had a chance to look at it, has a lot of activity in it. Some time ago, council asked the mayor and the administration to ask our various departments in the city to give us some budget projections and also give us some idea of end-of-the-year appropriations that they thought they were going to need. These are some of those appropriations. Some of them are indeed end-of-the-year, others are immediately needed. There's some salary issues in here. So all of these are, have some degree of urgency on them. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to consider ordinance 10208 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 10208.
Second.
Okay, let me go through this. There are several sections and several activities in each section. Section 1, we are amending by appropriating from the unappropriated balance in the general fund these amounts. $30,000 to the general fund, the Office of the Law Director for Professional Services. $2,000 to lands and buildings for security supplies. I believe that's security with regards to land, to the buildings in the city, additional locks, better locks, et cetera. $3,000 to the general fund code enforcement for postage. The code office ends up sending out a lot of letters and they need to dismount to make it through the end of the year. $16,000, general fund parking enforcement for COM+. COM+ is a program that we went with several years ago. It's an organization that tracks unpaid parking tickets and it has indeed brought us a good return for the money that we spend. This is money that needs to be expended to this company so they will continue those services. $2,500 to tourism for bike racks for two new buses that we're getting. $4,050 to the Cable Access Fund for transfer later in this ordinance. We'll talk about this later in the ordinance. $30,000 to the DUI grant fund to meet payroll. This is a court activity. It's funded by a grant. There is money in the grant, but we have to appropriate the money for payroll. $2,000 to Indigent Drivers Interlock and Alcohol Monitoring Fund. This is a new fund, a special project authorized by the Ohio Revise Code. $20,500 to the Community Center Fund for exercise equipment and energy-efficient lighting. We talked about this some time ago. The community center has investigated ways to better handle their budget and it has been discovered that they're spending incredibly, incredible amount of money on electricity through their light bulbs in the whole facility. So for expenditure of $17,000, those can be switched out to LED lights in total for the building and we will save considerable sum of money monthly. There's also about $2,500 for some equipment purchases. The equipment was in the building when it opened almost 10 years ago and it's beginning to wear out. Do you have a question about that?
No.
Okay, thank you. Still in section 1, $2,100 to Water Fund for postage and handling to cover utility bills through the year, the end of the year. $3,300 to the Sewer Fund for the same activities, bills through the end of the year. $3,500 to unclaimed funds for refunds. We do maintain a fund for unclaimed refunds and we actually have refunded a lot of that money recently, so this is to replenish that fund. That's section 1. Section 2 is appropriating money by decreasing the general fund by $5,613.25 and moving it to another fund in the general fund, which is actually the City Council Fund. And that will be money that will be used for updating our Athens City Code, making it web accessible and much more accessible to the general public. And section 3 authorizes the auditor to make the following interfund transfer. That Cable Access Fund that we moved money into back in section 1, the auditor is going to move that money to the general fund and then in section 4, it will be appropriated from that fund, again, to add to the money needed to update the city code. That's ordinance 10208. Any questions about any part of that? Did you keep track of it? Thank you.
Mayor Wile.
We will be looking at other funds. We're working our way through, see what we need to keep us flowing to the end of the year. We're not entirely done, but this is a piece of it, as you can tell. And again, the web, the web presence for our code needs to be updated, so we need to do that quick as possible.
Okay. We're suspending the rules. We do have an emergency clause also. Or no, we don't have to. Further discussion at all? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10208?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 10308, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office from January 108 through December 30 108 and declaring an emergency. Again, member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance does exactly what it says. It authorizes payment for the, our share of the Public Defender's Office, which in calendar year 2008, January, which, I'll be paying, I got lost in the dates here, I'm sorry. Mayor?
Actually, I would request this to be suspended. What happened is we, because we got an invoice for the first part of the year and realized, or that we didn't have a contract in place.
Okay.
So I can't pay the invoice and I don't have a contract.
I'm sorry. Let me back up, Mr. President. I would like to ask that ordinance 10308 also be considered under suspension of the rules.
Second.
As the mayor pointed out, this is our current year contract, which we haven't been authorized, haven't authorized payment for yet, so we need to do that. And soon we will have a contract for 2009. Our cost for the Office of the Public Defender in the year
Motion and a second to consider 10308 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 10308.
Second.
I'm sorry for all the same things I just said.
Is there further discussion? Member Gosny.
And this is, maybe it will be more appropriate when we talk about next year's contract, but as I understand, there's a $25 application fee for, to get a public defender.
I still have state law.
State law, okay. I withdraw my comments. I have the same problem with the UCA.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10308?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Now let's start a techler file on contracts. Ordinance 10408, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with University Courtyard and McDonald Transportation to provide bus service to the apartment complex and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Yes, Mr. President. This will enable the mayor to move forward with an agreement with University Courtyard, as explained in the ordinance. And next, at the next council meeting where we are doing readings on the second reading, we would like to suspend the rules. So if anybody has a comment on this or wants to provide feedback, we'd urge people to contact us. We are needing to move it through because the current agreement has expired.
Further comments? Mayor Wile.
Okay, there's actually two pieces to this, if you notice. University Courtyard is one agreement with University Courtyard. That, that contract actually, yeah, yeah, deadlined July, okay. The McDonald is due to December, so we have time for that. We're talking to them right now to look at the pricing and everything like that, but it's actually two different contracts we're looking at, one with our entire bus system, one with the courtyard. So for clarification purposes.
Thank you. Other comments? Ordinance 10508, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of a new salt bin, project number 242. Member Bain.
Mr. President, as you can see, we've moved beyond talking into the action stage and I appreciate that very much. We're putting aside $30,000 to, from the street fund to do the design work on the salt bin. And if Chris is making, is, we're going to put some really expensive salt in it apparently, and a future one. But if Chris is suspending, I might like to suspend on this one next time, too, so we can get it moving.
Yeah.
10 years nagging, it's worth it.
Further comments on ordinance 105? Ordinance 10608, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of fluorine, chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide. Again, member Bain, and I'll refrain from doing my bomb job this year.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Used to be the case that we'd have these routine purchases that we'd go out for contract on. I guess if you've been following American County and City and other places, the price of salt is apparently spiraling out of control. That and gold. I don't know what the situation is there, but something's happening. And so we have this ordinance that has $100,000 plus more over last year, primarily in the salt area. And it's divided up among a number of entities, but it's still a problem. And I know American Municipal League has been working on a contract on that and perhaps by the time we're through, we'll see if that would work for us. I know there are timing issues, but I am a little bit concerned about where it's going. If we buy it all in January and the price goes down, seems like everything was going down today, except for gold and salt and diamond. I guess diamond might be the salt purveyor. I thought they just did almonds, but they must do salt, too. Anyway, I was watching the market, obviously. Too much discretionary time. There, we, you see that we would have, if we could maybe adjust or go with the municipal league, perhaps we could get a savings, maybe not this year, but next, maybe next year it won't be even very expensive. I don't know if Andy's looked at the municipal league mayor, but perhaps you could let us know on that one.
I know he's been, there's been a lot of email chatter back and forth between the county and the municipal league. They put out a survey as well of all the counties that they've been getting responses for in terms of price. It is very strange and not so much wondrous, but disturbing to see how much salt is going up.
And it's not gold, so I guess we, we do have some time at least for now. I wouldn't want to be the person that didn't have salt on the street, on the hill in front of my house, the first time at ISIS, but on the other hand, we do have to take care of it. I hope we can find a way to save a little money there, but I always hope that.
Further comments on ordinance 106? Ordinance 10708, an ordinance amending ordinance 03908, accepting a limited warranty deed from Athens 08 LCC Holzer Clinic. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this and the next several ordinances are actually addressing an issue that has already come through council. We are re-accepting this deed and several easements related to the access road out by Holzer Clinic because the exhibits that were attached had some issues the last time it came through, is my understanding. Sierra Meek is here representing Holzer if people have additional questions about this, but they are not in any hurry to get this through. ODOT has what they need to allow the project to proceed. And I'll say once again, for, you know, anybody who's paying attention to this process, we're not using any city tax dollars for anything associated with this. We are just accepting the deed and the easements for this access road.
And Debbie, the one thing that I became privy with setting in on some of the staff meetings was that basically some of the exhibits were not done to exact ODOT specifications, very, very technical reasons for these, so, okay. Other comments on ordinance 107? Ordinance 10808, an ordinance amending ordinance 04008, accepting a perpetual leasement from Hocking River Properties Limited to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses. Again, member Phillips.
Again, Mr. President, this is one of the ordinances to re-accept the easement related to the Holzer access road.
Further comments? Ordinance 10908, an ordinance amending ordinance 04108, accepting a perpetual leasement from Our Future Development Limited to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer Clinic and adjacent businesses. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this is another of those easements related to the Holzer access road.
And we're not done yet. Is there further comment? Ordinance 11008, an ordinance amending ordinance 04208, accepting a perpetual leasement, oh boy, from Shariji Motel, Inc. to the city of Athens for the construction of an access road to Holzer and adjacent businesses.
Mr. President.
I hope I pronounced that correctly.
I believe this is the last one of these. The reason that there are four separate ordinances here is that the access road crosses several different properties and all of those easements need to be documented because that will end up being part of a public right-of-way.
Okay. Is there further discussion on ordinance 110? Ordinance 11108, an ordinance amending the 2008 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an interfund transfer to provide the city's local match for the Community Housing Improvement Program. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance has a couple sections and this is our, an ordinance dealing with the city's application for community housing improvement dollars to go into our Community Housing Improvement Program, our CHIP Program. And we have been approved for a $215,000 grant from the state CDBG fund, but the catch to that is that the state is requiring that we put in $100,000 match from our CDBG revolving loan fund. And so that's section 2, authorizing the auditor to make an interfund transfer from the revolving loan fund to the CDBG fund in the amount of $100,000. This is not, does not need to be suspended, I understand.
Third one. Is there further discussion on ordinance 11108? Under resolutions for first reading, resolution 0808, a resolution establishing responsible contractor bid criteria. This is introduced by all members of council and will be spoken to by Alahu Gosny.
Thanks. This is my first resolution, so if I bumble the.
Oh, I'll be here to help, yeah.
Okay, this is a resolution to adopt some bidder criteria for city projects. This, I'd like to emphasize this will only apply to city projects that the city government undertakes. A similar set of criteria was adopted by the county a number of years ago and it's been working well for them. This requires that contracts, contractors on city projects are reputable. It will help ensure that they're financially stable and that they do quality work. We won't have to go back and fix any construction projects, hopefully, once these are in place. And it will, this will really protect our investment, protect the city's investment in large projects around the city. I believe the mayor's office has reviewed this in the past and they seem to be okay with it. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay. We'll see how it works in practice, but it's just guidelines. It'll work.
Member Gosny, since this is a one reading resolution, could we have a motion to adopt?
Is it one reading?
Three readings.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was, I read resolution for first reading. My apologies. So it is a three reading resolution. Is there further discussion? Announcements and other business? Member Bain.
Mr. President, last week, Pam, Pam Harvey came and visited us with a proposal that United Appeal was trying with other counties, doing what other counties have done to reinstate something equivalent to Caroline, it's called 211. It's an Ohio collaborative with a call center in Athens would go back to the good old days when we had such a facility here. And so I have a letter in my hand dated October 6 that if it's okay with you, I'll read it quickly and then Bill will sign it and send it off. "Athens City Council is pleased to support United Appeal for Athens County and United Way of Muskingham, Perry and Morgan Counties' application for the 211 Collaborative to become the 211 Call Center for Athens, Morgan, Muskingham and Perry Counties." Long sentence. "The residents of these four counties will benefit from this service in many ways. It's easy to remember, it is, this easy-to-remember telephone number accessible to everyone at no cost, connects people to community resources 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The 211 Call Center will be answered by trained information and referral specialists and will be a valuable resource to our community. The Athens City Council looks forward to working with 211 and we are confident that the Call Center will serve our communities' needs for information and referral." Having read that, I would like to move that we support Bill in signing this letter and sending it forward to Pam Harvey.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll be happy to sign them. Other announcements? Yes?
I'll leave a planning and development committee meeting next week. I expect the Chamber of Commerce, Jennifer Simon, to be here to talk with us again about the structural changes that are happening with the chamber and to look at a potential contract for us to move forward for our part of that.
Other announcements? Member Sands.
Mr. President, I'd like to schedule a community issues committee. Several weeks ago, council members received a copy of a proposal for a resolution to support a nondiscrimination, nondiscriminatory bill in the House, Senate, and in the state Senate and House. Kim Welter, who is the program manager for that group, would like to come and speak to us, meet us next, next week. And if you have any questions about this proposal, that would be the time to ask. We will follow up with a resolution after that. I'm sorry.
Budget.
And we're going to mention the budget. Probably the auditor will begin discussion of the budget in two weeks at our next meeting and then we will follow up with further discussions. The 2009 budget is fast approaching.
The budget began.
And with that in mind, I'm sure that we will have some finance issues to discuss next week also.
I'd be surprised if we did.
Jim, remember, we want those reports from the various areas on what, on their potential cuts and.
Yeah, as I mentioned, with regards to an earlier ordinance, we asked the mayor to ask department heads for not only their end-of-the-year needs, but also their proposals for budget and include in that the possibility for us in what we consider reasonably small cuts, 2%, 3% or 5%. And so we'll be looking at, hopefully looking at those also in this, during this discussion. We're not in any way saying that we need to make cuts, but we do need to be prepared by looking at all of our neighbors across the state and the nation.
Any other announcements? Member Gosny.
I will also need an environment committee meeting next week. I'm meeting with the water protection team tomorrow and I may have some things to discuss.
Member Nysley. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I'd like to have a transportation committee meeting, so we can have an update on the Transportation Advisory Task Force Group that's been meeting, and also the bicycle and pedestrian safety.
Very good. Anyone else?
Excuse me?
Yes.
You and I have gone back and forth about an exit conference from our auditors, and I think everybody got their copy of the audit in the mailbox. And we discussed about, a formal exit conference involves our auditors, but because we only have two issues on our audit, you know, we said, no, that's not necessary. However, I would like to have a short discussion with council members. Anybody who wants to go in-depth about the audit is fine with me, but the two issues that we have involve council action. And I really think that, you know, if you're going to be voting on that by the end of the year, that new members in particular need to understand why we're doing what we're doing. It's really up to you if you want to meet just, you know, 15 or 20 minutes before the next meeting or the one after, or, but we will need to be, I will, no, I will bring it, be bringing my issue to council before the end of the year, so, whatever you decide in whether you need to announce it, I don't know if next week is too soon, but like I said, I don't think it, it needs a lot of in-depth discussion.
Well, and maybe we could combine it with a event that I just realized we probably needed to announce. This Saturday, the 11th, at 8:00 a.m., City Council is going to be having a retreat at the UN. Again, since it is more than a couple of council members together, anybody that wishes to attend will be welcome. And if the auditor would like to come then and possibly talk about it, that might be a good way to get, get it out of the way.
I'd be fine, can I be early on the agenda?
No. If I have to sit through all that stuff, you do, too. We'll, we'll see what we can do.
Let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other announcements that anyone wishes to make?
Uh, yes.
Yes, member Gosne.
Just, this was kind of an odd thing that happened. Someone contacted council because they, someone came to their door and asked about if they needed tree trimming and related services. Someone calling themselves One World Tree, and on their, on their advertisement sheet they had, they referenced the environment committee for Athens City Council. I haven't seen it yet, I'm going to get a copy of it, but just want to make clear that we're in no way, shape, or form associated with any tree service at all. So, just want to put that out there publicly.
Wow, okay, that's a first. I don't ever remember that one happening. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that we have not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium. Our, the rules of council require that you give us your name and address, and you're welcome to speak for up to three minutes.
All righty. My name's Abraham Alasoff. I live at 135 South Green Drive, room 323. I don't know if that's any relevant, but I'm here about sodium fluoride, and I have here a little brief summary of what I want to say. First of all, it needs to be stated that the substance referred to as fluoride is a misnomer. There is no such substance listed in the periodic chart or in the elements, nor in the prestigious CRC handbook. Instead, we find a gas called fluorine, and from the use of this gas in various industries such as the aluminum manufacturing and the nuclear industry, certain toxic byproducts are created which have captured fluorine molecules. One such toxic poisonous byproduct is called sodium fluoride, which its primary use is rat and cockroach poison, and is also an active ingredient in most toothpaste, and is an additive to our drinking water. But sadly, there's more to the sword tale. Sodium fluoride is also one of the basic ingredients in both Prozac and Siren nerve gas. The truth the American public and the citizens of Athens need to understand is that the fact that sodium fluoride is nothing more or less than a hazardous waste byproduct of the nuclear and aluminum industries, in addition to being the primary ingredient into rat and cockroach poisons. It is also a main ingredient in antesthetics, psychiatric drugs, and as well as a military nerve gas. Why then is it allowed to be added to the toothpaste and drinking water of the American people? Independent scientific evidence over the past 50-plus years have shown that sodium fluoride shortens our lifespans, promotes various cancers and mental disturbances, and most importantly, makes humans stupid and docile, all in one neat little package. There's increasing evidence that the aluminum in the brain is a cause of, a causing factor of Alzheimer's disease. The evidence points towards sodium fluoride's strong affinity to bond with its dangerous aluminum. Remember, it is a byproduct of the aluminum manufacturing, and also its ability to trick the brain, the blood-brain barrier by imitating the hydrogen ion, thus allowing the chemical access to the brain tissue. Concerning the practice of putting sodium fluoride in drinking water, where did this insanity begin and who was tried at first? From research, the very first occurrence of purposely putting sodium fluoride in drinking water was in the German ghettos and in the, and in Nazi Germany's infamous prison camps. The Gestapo, you see, had little concern about sodium fluoride's supposed effect on children's teeth. Instead, the reason for mass medication water with sodium fluoride was to sterilize humans and to force the people into concentration camps into calm, bovine, and docile submission. You can see the reference to this in the Crime and Punishment of IG Farben, written by Joseph Borkin. And then also, I have here an MSDS sheet, which is a material safety data sheet on sodium fluoride, which is essentially every chemical has one, and health rating it got was a three, which is severe, and parentheses beside it says poisonous. I think I want to read, it says hazardous identification. Danger, danger, may be fatal if swallowed and hailed, affects respiratory system, heart, skeleton, circulatory, circulatory system, central nervous system, and kidneys.
Sir, I need you to wrap up your three minutes.
All right, well, I just want to pass this along and have council read this, and also I have 50 Reasons to Oppose Fluoridation by Dr. Paul Connet, PhD, professor of chemistry at St. Lawrence University, if you guys would be kind enough to look at this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there others wishing to speak before council this evening?
Good evening. Greg Broadhurst, 14 Granville Avenue in Athens, Ohio. I'm a certified arborist and urban forester, and have a background in environmental planning. Speaking to what Mr. Gosne was talking about, two years ago, I brought council recommendations for a tradesman's ordinance, so I need not say more. But I will say that I have seen, even today, installations on projects under the jurisdiction of the landscape ordinance, which are improper. Upon inquiring with the workers, they said they were non-professionals and that they were working for the owner of the property. And it's amazing, because improper planting of trees presently and down the line caused both the owners of the property and city, thousands. So, I encourage city council to come up with a tradesman's ordinance that also includes professional landscape people, tree surgeons, arborists, or whatever have you, and require them to have certifications before being allowed to follow through and work on any projects in the city. I think the auditors should know what they are, too, as well, to be able to collect taxes, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Nels, did you wish to speak?
Hello, I'm John Nels of 29 Atkins Street, Gloucester, Ohio. I have given, or you all have received, a packet of materials. I wanted to just give you a quick update on status of things with trails. The materials I gave you were three current versions of trail plans, one for Stroud's Run Trail System, which has been around since 2003, and one for Athens Trail, which has been around since 2003, and one for Athens Trail at the ridges. And I also wanted to point out a memo from Paula Mosley declaring a moratorium on any volunteer work on trails on city-owned land, and that this memo also specifies in the future, any activities maintaining or building trails in the future will require specific authorization by Rich Campatelli, Director of Athens Arts, Parks, and Recreation. And of course, this does concern me. This particular moratorium was at the specific request of Mr. Greg Broadhurst, who just spoke. And in any case, this does prevent me right now from finishing a major project segment that I've been working on, on the trail system, which is a continu, a direct continuation of the work that I've been doing over the last five years to develop the trail, urban trail system. And this also specifies that no volunteer may even remove a branch from the trail, a fallen branch, and in the future, if they want to remove a fallen branch from the trail, they must have prior specific authorization from Rich Campatelli. So, I'm very concerned with how things are shaping up. I'd like to give you a more full report on things at a future date, but in the meantime, I did want you to have these materials and be aware of them, and to be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nels. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council this evening? Seeing, and seeing that the next item on our agenda is an executive session, an executive session allows council to go into a private meeting for very few things, but I think all three are listed tonight. We're only missing purchase of real estate, aren't we? Collective bargaining and threatened, and pending litigation, so those are the reasons that we will need to go into executive session. I believe, well, it takes a motion to do that, and then pulling of council, I believe the deputy auditor we need to include in our executive session this evening. When we come out of executive session, we will only adjourn, that's the only piece of business that's left afterwards. That clock says 8:12. When it says 8:30, I'm going to make, ask that everybody leave the room. We have quite a few students from a class tonight, and they usually like the opportunity to ask council questions, but we will ask that you have your questions done by 8:30, if you would. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Aye.
Member Butler?
Aye.
Motion? And a sec, from?
Second.
Member Coon?
To include.
Oh, that's correct. In addition to all members of council, I believe we are inviting the law director, the mayor, the auditor, and the deputy auditor. Is there anyone else, any council member wishes to have with us? No, I'm sorry.
Aye.
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 So, with that, you have until 8:30 to meet with your council members. Thank you all.